Councilor that we're receiving.
Thank you.
This is our second in discussion. During the. I'll go with favor. That has this. And if that has it. It's for a worry.
You're still in discussion, uh, council discussion on contracts and local public works. I think, uh, the speaker's queue is still, uh. The speaker's queue, uh, when we recessed were those, Raul, Currie, and the lead.
Okay? Let's go.
So, Mr. City Manager, I was just wanted some clarity. So, are you saying that we will hire a contractor to do the right-of-way maintenance, piggybacking off of another?
I think we'll have, so we'll have an option. I'm sorry, hold on one second. Yes, we'll have that option. So, we have the Jacobs contract, you've got other funding in public works to coordinate activities, right? And so, right now, the state coordinates, I think it's about twenty-nine, somewhere between twenty-one and twenty-nine miles. Cause there's a portion of our city that they actually didn't have on their list. And so, they do it every forty-five days. But their, their service is not one that meets our level. So, they literally just mow and they leave it, whether it's trash, whether it's clippings, that's all that they're required to do for their contract. But that is not the capacity of their contractor. And since they have a state contract, what we can do is piggyback off of that state contract, if we can do business that way, and then ensure that the terms require a more frequent, uh, timeframe and the pickup, et cetera, et cetera, for those state groups. And at the rate that the state pays, I think it's fifty cent amount, don't quote me on that, but that is an option that we are exploring. Once we look at it fully, we'll talk to our partners at Jacobs and figure out what the best option for us is that keeps us within budget. And so, I just wanted to highlight that because Ms. Willis was actually, I think she had some concerns about, we thought it was someone else, but it was actually G-Dot coordinating that, that service, and I, I don't want to quote the role, but, but we talked about it. And then she met with their regional person, and I met with, uh, Russell and, and Kathy who were over G-Dot. And so, they provided us this contracting solution, uh, for us.
So, we would still key Jacobs to do the thirty-day, cause we're on a thirty-day rotation as far as things for our internal works, right?
But I, I wouldn't hope, yes, so we would, but I wouldn't hold us to that four-week plan that we have. I think what I want to talk to them about is if we remove some of the other services that we're coordinating, can we go to a two-week cycle? Because we need a more, uh, frequent, you know, so I think that, that's why I'm asking for the ability to negotiate. So, we don't just look at it as what Jacobs does for us, we've got the city view. So, what are all of the things that we're going to put together to have this implementation that fits the needs of our council and residents?
So, and also in that contract, I don't know if we mentioned, I know we mentioned the trees and vegetation.
Cutting back.
Cutting back, but also too, when those trees are cut, they're left in the right-of-way and they just die. So, no one is picking them up. Um, and a clear example of that is riding out West Road, riding out Hamilton. You'll see that those dead trees, I mean, those dead trees are there, but nobody is picking them up. And even with, um, uh, Councilwoman Raul had mentioned about the, uh, grass going in between the sidewalks and things of that nature. They put this chemical on there to, uh, kill the weeds. But it needs to be some type of maintenance just for beautification, cause now it just looks like there are weeds, you know, and it's just.
So, it's like use the chemical, then come back and clean out the grout and cut and all that good stuff. Yes, ma'am, I got you. And I'm, I just wanted to make sure, cause I'm still taking it up, so it's all right, one second for me before the next person goes. All right, I'm ready, sorry about that.
Okay, uh, the next figure is Raul and Ms. Gilliard, and we're going to close the hour.
One other thing, though, I think, I want to give, in fairness, our contract with Jacobs, isn't it roughly about two million dollars less than what we were paying account?
Yes, ma'am, please.
And, and I want the public to understand that, so it's not equal to equal. And I will say, I know at least in my area, it's not where I would want it to be, but it's definitely improved double with the county having it in place. So, I think, uh, that's something that we need to really be honest about. But as you look at these other vehicles for looking at maintenance or right-of-way, I also want us again to, uh, kind of focus on the fine details. So, I'm gonna give you a perfect example of Casgay, on Casgay Road. Um, as you look at some of the turning lanes, um, you have all this vegetation going around it. Oftentimes, they have, um, accident debris that's left behind, those kind of things, again, the details, you really need to kind of focus on that.
Understood, I, I'll make sure. I think that kind of chimes in to what everyone says, that you're giving a certain level of service, but even the level of service is not the, we want perfectly manicured streets in the city of South Fulton.
That's what I'm saying.
That's kind of where our focus is, and we want people to be a little bit more responsive on illegal dumping, even though we have to do some public education, we've got to solve the problem in the meantime, so I'm very clear on that.
Like I said, I want to be fair, cause they took over that operation in ten days and nobody had time to, you know, deal with all the details. But I just, I think that, that, we have to be fair about that. And again, um, I hope that we take it to another level, cause I also look at, um, like our street lights, our traffic signals, the back, the backgrounds are faded, they need to be painted. All those little fine details that, you know, I would hope that, I don't even know if that kind of, uh, detail is addressed in the contract, but it's something we need to look at, the signs, our traffic, um, signs, yield stop signs, you know, maybe pressure wash, clean.
Got it, that actually is.
I'll give Councilwoman Willis.
Uh, I also want to, uh, piggyback off of what Councilwoman Raul had said. I remember when, um, we were with the county, we were paying over nine million dollars for service. We were, we had a six-man crew, uh, the responsibility was, was not that great. And so, I think we need to start sharing the data of how many, um, uh, see click fix requests that they're responding to, the, the timeliness that they're responding to them. And then also, we have to think about the overhead, uh, we don't have to, we don't have to worry about overhead, we don't have to worry about equipment right now, we don't have to worry about building, not at some point, we will want to stand about our own service. But for what we're getting now, for the short period of time, they had to come aboard and take care of a ninety-seven mile square mile radius. I think it's not perfect, but it's much better than where we were.
Okay, uh, Ms. Gilliard, you're the program, you can leave.
This isn't really under, uh, public works, but they're helping. I'm getting a lot of calls about South Fulton Parkway and Highway ninety-two, where they are changing the lights and getting this backing of traffic unbelievably. Uh, it's taking people fifteen to twenty minutes to get out of subdivisions or just move along the street. And I know that, that, um, Mr. Valenzuela has been really, really following up on it, but the state needs to do that job.
Agreed, we working with G-Dot on that, that's part of the reason we had that meeting. It was that one, as well as the installation on Old National that I sent you when they were doing the left-turning lane, but they were doing it during the day and backing up traffic. So, we have, uh, been very vocal with them about adjusting some of those schedules, but I think those two projects were kind of underway ahead of time, but, uh, there's one coming. And I, I don't remember exactly where it was, but the one that I sent you about the right-turning lane that was on Old National, I sent you the pictures and all that good stuff, they have to, I think they're now going to be adding a left-turn signal. And so, that one, they're actually going to do at the lowest traffic time. So, they, I will say, they've been a pretty good partner to us. When we, um, put our wishes out there, they've actually been abiding by them, so I would, I think they'll be able to make some adjustments there.
Do you know if they are, um, putting a left-turning lane right there beyond the warehouse up to the corner of Ninety-two?
I don't right now, but I can find out.
Could you check that out?
Yes, ma'am.
And I'll be able to check.
Um, we were talking about the lights, um, on Oldville, not Oldville, I mean Gabby Place, Gabby Road. There's a light there.
Okay.
And it, it just lasts, uh, for about seventeen.
That's the one with the long signal, yeah.
Yeah, it, it just stays, but the other traffic goes, you know, it's like a stop.
I know we reported that one, and, and I don't think they've given us a response yet. I think before Mr. Valenzuela left, I don't, it may have been you, one of the council members, pointed that, a concern out. You know, I think it was.
The county?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah, but before you, uh, before you left, he actually reached out to, um, get some information regarding, um, you know, that light. Because I think one side, the traffic count is extremely high, the other side, not so much, and so, they have it longer. I think they have it at a four-minute and one-minute interval, he was asking could they increase it?
But it's, it's ridiculous.
Yeah, that's, that's a recent request, and so, when they, uh, what we'll likely do is take your two requests and just respond to them at the same time for the forecount.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Currie, as I asked, but I feel that that is a big, um, problem, so. Uh, I'll give you those fingers, will you?
Yeah, and, and I'm real quick too, I just want to echo what, uh, Councilwoman Raul, as, uh, Councilwoman Willis stated regarding the two million dollar difference for our public, it's just certain things that our public don't, you know, normally hear. And as well as the see click, see click fix, uh, effectiveness, I know we've had turnaround times as soon as twenty-four hours. Uh, some, you know, related forty-eight hour, I know, uh, Use of Auto has been out and he's been going to help some of our residents who don't know how to effectively use the app, and, you know, now they know how to do it, and, you know, they, they've been giving us emails about how effective it is. Of course, you're gonna have some people who have a problem for every solution, when you have so much attention that, uh, you normally don't have. And I think that we have a lot of attention that comes from Jacobs that we don't normally, that we weren't used to having from the county, and we get to nitpick it because someone is responding to us. And I just think we should take all of that into consideration as well.
I think the one thing, ma'am, if you allow me to just say this, there is a balance, though, and I know our partners from Jacobs are here, and they would attest that I think I've been very fair with them. I think to, let's say, Councilmember Jackson and Councilmember Gilliard's point, we are making a, a hefty investment for our city. And so, while the county's dollar amount was much higher, our coins don't stretch as far, and so, we want the best for our buck. But I think, on behalf of the other council members, I think it is, we do have to do a fair assessment and know that we were being charged a heck of a lot more for a much worse service. And so, the one thing and the reason we're asking for this ability to negotiate is because we want to meet the fairest middle ground where we're getting the best for our buck, and we should expect more for our dollar. And so, I think, I think we're all on the same page.
Thank you, thank you, and I would just, yeah, I'm hoping to close out the, uh, work session. I make a motion to close out the work session. Thank you. Second in discussion, here's our, uh, we're gonna, uh, it's for a tax, you had it.
Um, when, when are we gonna, uh, figure out how to vote using this system? Okay, cause we, we're gonna have a discrepancy of who voted on what, and, and the way to solve the discrepancy is to, you know.
Okay, this is the roll call for the regular council meeting, October eighth, seven P M. Roll call, Honorable William Bill Edwards. Honorable Mayor Prochill, Mark Baker.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember Captain Robb.
Present.
Honorable Cap, Councilmember Conley the Guns.
Present.
Honorable Councilmember Helen Willis. Honorable Councilmember Naomi Gilliard.
Present.
And Honorable Councilmember Rosie Jackson.
Present.
And Honorable Councilmember Cleve.
Present.
Mr. Mayor, you have a call.
Uh, at this time, we'll have invitation by, uh, Reverend Henry, thought about faith. For those of you that don't mind, stand where you stand, we will wait. Let us pray. Dear gracious God, in the midst of the day, we travel, we move, we move fast, and yet, comes a time in the day where we can pause just to say thank you. That's this day. We thank you for the city of South Fulton, for our elected officials, mayor, city council, for the burden that they wear, oh God, but how you lift them and help them to carry it, all of the people on their shoulders, oh God. We thank you for their prayers, we thank you for their desires to see the city do great things, and because of that it is. But we thank you for watching over us, every department, for every citizen, for keeping us from hurt, harm, and dangers seen and unseen. So, as we do the task that is before us, allow your presence to be made known this night, this we pray, let us all say, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, you may be free.
Next item on the agenda is presentations and announcements. The first is presentation of blood drive trophy to win edition, uh, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and to our council, to our city manager and assistant city manager. On September the twenty-seventh, we, um, had our first bi-annual citywide blood drive, and it was a great success. And I just want to take a moment, uh, to give a few thank yous out there. First of all, to, uh, the volunteer team that helps out with the office of the chaplaincy, uh, for helping to make sure that everything that we did was on time and, and planned as, as well as it did. So, Barbara, thank you, and to Mr. Warren, who's not present with us. Also want to just take a moment to thank every department that, that came out and participated and, and pushed us, um, you name them, they were there. All of the citizens who also participate, I'm trying not to call names, cause you know, when you call names, you get in trouble, um, trying to do that. But I have to call one name and give recognition to Brandion Taylor. Brandion, uh, went through city hall and got over twenty-some odd employees to sign up for the blood drive. We had as many employees to come and give blood as we did citizens within our great city. And also, the department that had more than anybody to show up to give was our police department. So, we just want to thank the police department and Brandion for all of the work that they do. In the city council, we have a couple individuals from, uh, the American Red Cross that's here to just want to give some numbers and share some thank yous and some information, and that is Odette Simmons, she's gonna come. And then all the way from Charlotte, North Carolina, city manager who was here last week, flew all the way back up today to be with us. And there's Dr. Edet Miller from Charlotte, North Carolina, and she is the executive medical officer for the American Red Cross. And upon that, I'll come back up, and Mayor, get you to present who district won, amen.
Hello, Mayor and city council, my name is Odette Simmons, and I am one of two minority recruitment reps for the American Red Cross. Some of what that means is that I recruit donors that are of a minority base, because they're very important to the American Red Cross. Um, as Pastor Henry stated, we had a very, very, very successful blood drive here, um, on Friday, September twenty-seventh. It was held at Wolf, Wolf Mall Park from eleven A M. to four P M. Uh, going into the blood drive, we had thirty-seven donors that signed up to donate blood. On the day of the blood drive, we saw forty-two donors. Of that forty-two donors, we had a few that were deferred for different reasons, could be your medication, could be your travel, um, different reasons, your iron that, um, can be deferred. We had, um, one donor that started the process but couldn't all be finished, probably because of dehydration. And I'm proud to say, on a goal of twenty-five units, we successfully exceeded our goal, and we collected thirty units of blood, resulting in a hundred and twenty percent over and above the goal that we set. So, thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members, I'm Dr. Edet Miller, and I'm the executive medical officer for the American Red Cross. And, um, my heart's just full, because this was the very first blood drive that you all had, and it was extremely successful. And so, I want to thank everybody for everything that you did. And I want to, um, to especially thank Pastor Henry as well for having the foresight of, um, organizing this blood drive and agreeing to have it bi-annually. So, it's extremely important for, as Odette said, for African-Americans and people from, um, communities of color to donate blood, because, uh, an example I'm gonna use is sickle cell disease. When a person has sickle cell disease, they require multiple transfusions. And when you have a situation where the recipient is multiply transfused like that, the hospital will actually ask us to, uh, to, to provide a unit of blood from an African-American donor, because our blood most closely matches the recipient. In the United States, about a hundred thousand people have sickle cell disease, and the majority of them are African-American. So, it's critically important for us as citizens to support our communities and donate blood. So, I really want to thank you all so much, and encourage you absolutely to schedule your next blood drive. And the young, was it a young man that did all the, yeah, definitely, how do you get, get them to do your recruiting, because that was extremely important. The face-to-face asking of someone to donate blood is the most effective way. You know, sending out emails is good to get the information out, but one person asking another person to donate is really the most effective way to recruit for, um, for a blood drive. And again, I thank you all so very much for having this blood drive, and having it be so successful. And anytime I'm leaving here, I will be here. So, thank you very much.
Next item, proclamation presented to fire department. Uh, Mayor is coming, let me just say that, uh, with the blood drive, we actually wanted to try to make it fun and exciting, and therefore, citizens, we actually asked our districts if they would, uh, challenge each other, and someone will gain brand new rights. We were asking the each other, the constituents, to get them to come out and to donate blood, to volunteer. And in this envelope that we're gonna give it to the mayor, the winner is kidnapped. Now, Mayor, I want you to know that the city manager got the envelope, the assistant city manager, so if you called the wrong one. And just before you do that. This is the trophy.
So, we have to give that up every year for a win?
Yes, you're gonna have to pass it off to the next, we have to have a right session, and that's the mayor's session.
You're gonna have to have a win.
Well, I was gonna show that y'all did have some people come. Uh, this, this one, Raul, you had six. Ms. Gilliard, you had six. Ms. Guns, you had two. Jackson, you had two. And the guy in the roundabout, you won a piece. Then the winner is, is three-three. She had, this, she had eight. Yeah, I know, it was an addition. People did walk up there.
It's like a parade.
Yeah, I know, this is a great place.
I don't know.
Here we go. Is everybody in? One, two, three, wait. One, two, three. One, two. Three. Come on. One, two, three.
All right.
Congratulations.
So, if you, next year, you gotta keep it.
Yeah.
Next item, proclamation presented to fire department for fire convention week, for council. It's always good to give proclamation. And especially good, we really do give proclamation as a government body, as a family. And this will be done today with our fantastic fire department, let's give them a round of applause. Maybe some of y'all didn't, this man to my right, he was going to ask. Fire chief of Congress. That's Fire Chief of Congress, right? So, I, the reason for proclamation, it says, whereas the city of South Fulton is committed to ensuring safety and security to all those living in and visiting our city, fire is serious public safety concern, but globally and nationally, the homes are at the location where people are at greatest risk of fire. Three out of five homes, three out of, three out of five homes, fire deaths result in fires and partly without working smoke alarms. And the city of South Fulton residents should install smoke alarms in every sleeping room, outside each separate sleeping carriage, and on every level of the home. People feel safest in their home, it is also the place people are at greatest risk of fire, with four out of five U S. fire deaths occurring at home. City of South Fulton residents have planned and practiced a home, home fire escape plan, are more prepared, and will definitely be one life to survive the fire. All citizens are encouraged to close their, their bedroom doors before sleeping. That's a good one, I mean. Which will keep one safe from, from fire and smoke. The two thousand nineteen fire prevention week theme is, not every hero wears a cape. Plan and practice your escape. This year's campaign recognizes the everyday people who motivate their, their household to develop and practice a home fire safety plan. Decently basic behaviors can have only life-saving impact. Now, they will be resolved, as the mayor and city council recognize. The great importance of fire prevention commends off the efforts of fire, of South Fulton fire departments efforts to educate the public about fire safety, just to hear about playing Sunday, October sixth, through Saturday, October twelve, at fire prevention week in the city of South Fulton, Georgia. Let's give them a round of applause. Now, before I give this, the chief and the two of those parties, I do also want to recognize them for, you know, they raised about, almost nine thousand dollars. They raised about nine thousand dollars for M D H. year. That's fantastic. So, any kind of damage, the food you know what to do, put your money in the food, right? Thank you, Mayor, council, for this, um, our, our fire mushroom is actually responsible for this, the local department, to give a few words.
This year, we really truly want to understand that every hero is not wearing a cape. Every hero that you see in the city of South Fulton has a message, education, for you to be a safer, well, safe and warm environment, a healthy environment, you know, a safety-conscious community, and a well-educated community in our services that we employ. When we look at our safety education, we look at our education, our ability to provide you with engineering technology in the newest and latest smoke alarms that are developed. you with engineering technology in the newest and latest smoke alarms that are developed. The ability to teach you how to use them, the ability to remind you to close your doors when you doze. We have excellent videos that are being sent to every school in the city of South Fulton this month, so that they're educated on close when you doze. So we look forward to continuing serving you as the responders on every fire apparatus, as the responders who will come in and teach fire safety educators, and as the community leaders that we hope to always serve you in this community. We hope you have a great, safe October month, not just a week, and we hope our services continue to serve you proudly.
Now, I think everybody will say congratulations, and thank you all this year. Ms. Kirk? Yes, the next item is the adoption of council agenda.
I'll make the motion to approve the council agenda.
I need to add, correct, a second. Um, I'd like to add, council comments right up under the city attorney's monthly report. It goes, we did, uh, on the agenda, city attorney's monthly report, city attorney's monthly report, and I'm asking for the council.
Council comments, Ms. Wilson? You wanted council comments, move away.
Right up under the city attorney's monthly report.
Yes, actually, it is already on there. Number seven, comments from council?
Okay, I'll let see.
Any other discussion?
I'd like to remove, uh, same grants, uh, item number two.
Can you have the, can you send it to the regular gentleman?
Yes.
Take it from the center, regular.
Yes.
Go ahead.
Can we add to that motion to remove the city attorney's report and defer the item in the half next meeting?
Sure. Get that in there. Yes, I did. Any other changes? Okay. Any other changes? Hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Oh, we're passing unanimously, Ms. Kirk.
Next item, approval of city council meeting minutes. Council approval of council work session meeting minutes, September 24th, 2019.
I live in there, okay.
I make, I make the motion to approve the council work session meeting that is September 24th, 2019.
Probably move the second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Ms. Kirk.
Next item, council approval of council regularity minutes, September 24th, 2019.
So move to approve Tuesday, October 8th, 2019, no trouble, council meeting minutes from September 24th, 2019.
Probably move the second. Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously, Ms. Kirk.
Next item, it's public comments. Speakers will be granted a total of two minutes each, and comments will not exceed thirty minutes. Speakers will not be allowed to yield or donate their time to other speakers. Speakers must identify themselves and their address prior to speaking. Speakers may only address the presiding officer, shall observe all rules and forms. No debate, disrespect, obscenities shall be tolerated. The presiding officer shall rule any such individual out of order that fails to comply with the program. This, mayor, we have nine speakers signed up this evening.
Make sure you air back three on something you said. You said thirty minutes. And total, yeah, it's too many for a person. I swear, I told her thirty. I don't want to back to it, if you had half now.
As I call your name, would you please line up at the podium and state your name and the district that you reside in? The first five speakers are Pamela Harris, Jose Bright, Michael Johnson, Ivory Denson, and Joyce Jones.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. I'm Jose Bright. I live in District Four, um, 4224 Caveat Court. Okay, make your, your mic. Um, 4224 Caveat Court, Fairburg, Georgia, Hampton Oaks Division. I'm a bit concerned by a conversation I had last night with one of the council members at a District Six County Commissioner candidate meeting. After the form, I was approached by her and she started to get a conversation with me that I'm getting wrong information on issues and that we need to get rid of our CFO. Why would a council person consider a conversation with me not for my district? And I'm very concerned if you're going to get rid of the CFO. I'm very concerned because I attend a lot of public hearings, public meetings, and I have not heard the process of a warning, of a written notice, warning, of an opportunity for correction, et cetera. So I'm a bit concerned if you're just going to have a motion at some point, either tonight or in the near future, to remove our CFO. I'm a bit concerned also that at the public hearing on the budget, the CFO was voted to be under the report of the city manager. Yet, at an earlier council meeting, the auditor stated that we have, we had clean audits and that our CFO has put strong system structures, processes, and people in place. In my 35 years of professional experience, I've never heard of terminating the civil servant without compliance with our labor laws and indecency and fairing. Above and beyond, I'm concerned about overspending in this city. We don't have proper control mechanisms, and if we do, we're not listening to. I do have some questions, and I'll leave my notes with the clerk.
Thank you.
Next speaker, Pamela Harris, Michael Johnson, Ivory Denson, Joyce Jones.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Harris.
Good job, Pamela.
Good evening, my name is Pamela Harris. I live in District One, 1870 Lion Avenue. And I just had two statements, brief. Number one, what are the benefits, if any, of putting the treasurer CFO under, back under the city manager? Organizationally, not all cities have that model, and if they did, it doesn't mean that one size fits all. And the second, for city manager, for transactions, for all contracts, please publish all contracts over 25,000 on our website, so that our citizens can see how you are spending our money and why. This is an area that can be prob, problematic, if not closely monitored. I'd like to know how all of them benefit the city. Thank you.
Good evening, mayor, council members. My name is Michael T. Downs, Sr. I live at 345 Bordeaux Court Southwest in Montclair Estates. My concern is the contracts that you guys, the Jacob thing, it doesn't set right with me. I understand they're two, that $2 million is cheaper than last year, but you get what you bargained for. Last, the last contract you had, they didn't do certain things, like this contract you had, you didn't do certain things right. And it looks like the negotiation was not done well, if I may say. And I would, I would suggest, recommend, however you choose to accept it, that the city manager states that the state has a contract? Then why not terminate for calls? Transfer that money to the state and let them pick up until y'all properly vet a good contractor to do what need done? And I highly recommend that the task that the contractors, contractors are supposed to do should be expressly detailed. If they're supposed to pick up trash, then pick up trash yet from this hour to this hour. Cut the following day and immediately clean up. That's an expensive contract for such lousy work. Both of the contracts were. And I'm speaking from a professional standpoint. Gee, I was a GS-13 contract specialist, I have my own contracting office. And it doesn't sound like y'all had good contracts put together. More details need to be put in these contracts for the statement of work, performance work statements, negotiation, it should be there. There's no reason why this should be the way it is. And where's your cores? Where's your contract officer representatives? Someone should be watching him and on, and just popping up and inspecting and reporting back. If that procurement office does not have a core, they're wrong. That's my thought.
Thank you, girl.
Good evening, I am Ivory Denson, and I live in District Two. I am concerned about the financial health of our city. There was not much increase in revenues, but a large increase in department spending. Additioning, additionally, there is not enough money according to budget in reserve. So how is this city to meet unexpected expenses if you do not have enough in reserve? This is reckless and irresponsible. But there is hope because we are fortunate in that, from my kind of meetings and reading documents, we have a very well-qualified CFO in Mr. Malazey. He has successfully got our city food, been paying a large loan, and he, and he declared the city debt free, because I was at that meeting. His expertise and credit worthiness and contacts are an asset. His credentials are impeccable. Therefore, I am requesting this council and the department heads to work with him to make ours the only city in America that is black-run, whose residents are predominantly black, and the city is fiscal and sound because its leaders share a common vision for the entire city, not just for the individual district. Its leaders receive and follow sound financial principles, and they are committed to public service rather than being served and receiving the honorariums that come therewith. Our city has the greatest potential, being really outstanding and great. Please, let's make it so. Thank you.
Good evening, um, my name is Joyce Jones. I live at 1688 New Hope Road. And I would just like to know... Oh, I'm sorry. My name is Joyce Jones, and I live at 1688 New Hope Road. And I would like to know, how did you allow a city manager to bring to you a budget that was six, uh, $7 million, with a $7 million deficit, and, and, uh, and not request a cut? And I wonder, who does he report to? Do he report to you, or do you report to him? Who is, uh, who is the city manager under? Is he under, uh, is he under you, or are you under him? The city manager? So, that's my question. Who is the city manager under? Is he under you, or are you, are you under him? Because are you all, you're under $7 million, uh, under a $7 million deficit? Something is wrong. Thank you.
The next five speakers, Julia Rankins, Dietrich Rhodes, Anon Francis, and Dolores Hampton. Please line up in the podium, please, in that order.
Julia Rankins, District Four. I just wanted to talk about the beautification you guys were talking about, and I just want to say, I think that is important, and I'm glad to hear that you're, you're interested in that in each one of the districts, and that you're promoting it and pushing it. Uh, but one thing I don't want to happen, and I'm thinking manager don't, don't, is not letting this happen, but I don't want to see it happen. I don't want us to let GDOT off the hook in any way. Uh, that's our government, they already don't have contracts with black people, you not let them off the hook, they need to do their job. Uh, I don't have a problem with people helping out and doing what they can in the interim, but they need to do their job. Also, I, um, wanted to ask the manager Donald if he would report out about the tree bank. I know you talked about it before, but you didn't get back with us. And I really don't understand the tree bank. What is it? Uh, do we have trees to plant, um, or what is the tree bank and what's going on with that? Uh, I think the city should look nice in all the areas, especially where we butt up against these other cities. Uh, some of them are doing things, but for years and decades, you know, nothing has been done. And I think we're motivating them, and I think our area should always look nice, especially as, you know, a promotion of the city of, uh, South Fulton. Uh, one of the things I think we should look at is some of the public soccer fields. Some of the other cities have these beautiful soccer fields. You ride down the road and you just look to the right or look to the back, and here are these beautiful soccer fields. And I think that's something that recreation should take up, and maybe there are some less for those. Thank you.
Good afternoon, um, my name is Dietrich Rhodes. I am from District Five, um, 5420 Long Hill Lane. Um, my concern, first I have to presence despite, I'm not a public speaker, I just have a concern, um, my concern is with the, um, solid waste. I know there's been a lot of talk about it and, um, opposition about it. I, my concern is twofold. One, um, I can't afford it. Two, um, I don't need it. I do have someone that, um, legally dumps my, my trash when I have it. I, I work two jobs, I leave at six in the morning, I'll get home until ten. So there's not a lot of trash that I do have. But, um, in the letter that was sent, I kinda feel bullied and, um, that if I don't get this, um, one of these sanitation, um, departments, um, I'm gonna, um, what is it? Be under penalty or, um, or, um, what it is, say, penalty or, um... I'm sorry. Didn't say being on the property, but it did say that, um, enforcement action will be taken. So it's like, I can't afford it, and if I get it, I know I can't pay for it, so at what point? I mean, I don't know what to do. I can't pay for it, I can get it, and they say, I mean, um, they're gonna come and pick up the trash, but I can't... I can get it and they say coming, um, they're gonna come and pick up the trash, but I can't pay it. I, I don't know what to do, and I guess, um, this concern, I guess I'm addressing it to my councilman, Ms. Jackson. I just don't know what to do with it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
My name's Anon Francis. I'm District One, and I live in New Hope Road. I speak for some of my fellow citizens, uh, in particular with concern about just being able to have two-way communication with the leaders. Uh, there are so many issues we find out when we come to these meetings, and by that time, key decisions are being made. So going forward, can we as citizens ask that there be quarterly, semi annual, at meetings at intervals where we can be aware of, uh, issues that would affect us and we can bring matters to these? So can we ask that? And is it unreasonable to expect that we'll have that in the next year? Uh, particularly, we want to find out each quarter maybe, or twice a year, what new businesses have been, or whether or not there have been an increase in the number of key businesses that would make a difference towards in tax revenue, being searched, organized, addressed, and invited to a seat. We are worried about potential for tax increases. And unless we have businesses bringing more tax revenue, we're worried that very soon we're gonna have to pay for a deficit that continues to be in growth. So please let us know what businesses you're working with, or if there's an increase in the number of businesses that are being considered for, uh, the city of South Fulton. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Good evening. My name is Dolores Hampton. I live at fifty-one ten Mont Calm Drive, southwest Atlanta, Georgia, in District One. And this is specifically directed to my district council lady. I don't know if you had the opportunity to travel on New Hope Road heading towards Oak Rock. Now, I live in Montclair Estates, corner house from Turn In. Over the last six weeks, or maybe two months, we've had at least six accidents at the corner of New Hope and Montclair, that intersection. Bruce Street is on the other side of the street. At that intersection, there's only a stop sign coming out of Montclair Estates. And on Bruce Road, we need four stopping, a four-way stop, because sooner or later, there's gonna be some deaths. Now, I live on that corner block, and I hear these accidents, and it's getting pretty frightening. More and more and more, they're happening. That's a lot of accidents in a period of two to six weeks, not two to six weeks, but two months, six weeks. So I would just want to put it on the record that I'm specifically addressing this issue. I hope somebody will come out and survey it so that we who live in the Montclair Estate area and along New Hope can kind of have some safety because it's very dangerous. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, that concludes all speaking of the comments cards. Next item, Chief Financial Officer's monthly report, presentation on the balanced budget.
Listen, Mayor, can I, can I ask the city manager, what, can I tell you this? Do we, is this from the six, September tenth?
What do you, I'm sorry.
The budget, then you said, the monthly budget.
This is just an overview on balanced budgeting in general from the CFO. I think it was on the last agenda, but it got moved to this one.
Okay, so what do you have there?
I don't know if this was provided, Mayor. I think you, you asked for it to be included in the CFO report, correct?
Yes. Yes. Not Martin May.
Oh, actually, clerk's office has it.
Okay, 'cause I know I have it. It's too bad, it's too bad.
Right.
I, uh, in sort of, we talk about the balanced budget at the beginning of the fiscal year so that we know what is expected of us as the elected officials as well as the, our department heads of how we go about with it, um, balanced budget. First, it will be, what's a balanced budget? Then the next question will be, what makes it necessary to amend the budget? What are examples of non-compliance to have balanced budget throughout the fiscal year? Then we'll have, what is fund balanced? So the definition of balanced budget is, a balanced budget is a situation in the financial planning or process where total revenues are equal to or greater than the expenses. And then the budget must remain balanced throughout the fiscal year. That means all the time we have estimated revenue, estimated expenses should always remain balanced throughout the fiscal, the fiscal year. No expenditure of any form must take place unless it was budgeted and there are sufficient funds in the budget. Budget amendments. Why do we need budget amendments? As you know, we'll be having some grants from five departments that will increase our revenue. Therefore, we have to increase our budget. That's one way of amending the budget. So the governing body is allowed to make budget amendments as many times as best is necessary. When there's a reasonable increase in revenue during the year, you can amend the budget. As I said, we will be amending our budget. When a significant revenue shortfall occurs or is expected to occur, you also have to amend the budget to reduce the budget because expenses are dictated by revenue. You cannot spend what you don't have. When there are new expenditures with corresponding revenues, so at times you have expenses that are coming, but you have also revenues that you find, then you can amend your budget. When expenditure priorities change, at times you'll have during the fiscal year where the manager or the department, they will say, what we budgeted is less important than what has come up now. So you may also want to amend the budget or make transfers. You can amend the budget if you are, at times you may move money or funding from one department to another department. That would require budget amendment. Some of this of non-compliance. When do we, at times, unaware or not knowing, when we can be out of compliance or we don't give the budget balance? These are some of the ways that if we don't know, we may be out of compliance. Unbudgeted expenditures. We may be tempted at times to spend when there are no funding. Approval of grants with local match requirements without allocating local match funding. So you received a grant, but those grants, sometimes they will need a local match. A good example is the one that is before us, we received safer grants, and they are requesting us to have local match of twenty-five percent in the first year, twenty-five percent in the second year, and only twenty-five percent in the third year. So when we have grants, one, we have to know we have local match, and also at the same time, we need to be planning of after the grants, what do we do, how do we keep those projects still going on? One of the example will also be in a budget to adhere to budget ordinance, policies and procedures put in place to control spending. So at times, we may have ordinances that dictate how we should spend or how we may move, but if we don't listen to those or we don't pay attention to our policies that we have or ordinances that we have passed, it will be easy, possible to overspend or be out of compliance. And lastly, will be lack of periodic review of spending for each department. So as you know, each department, you have an allocation of the spending for the fiscal year. So at the finance work you through, but also you need to know how you are spending so that at the end of the fiscal year, comes September thirtieth, you have not spent more than what was allocated to you. Fund balanced, what is fund balanced? Fund balanced is assets minus liabilities equal to fund balanced. In other words, what you have on the assets, you remove liabilities, whatever remains is fund balanced. Or some the other side is fund balanced, in any given fund, it is essentially what is left over. These are the rest use of what has given, you have on the revenue side, you have on the expenses side. If you have more revenues surplus, that one will be called fund balanced. There are several types of fund balanced. We have been talking about, we are negative fund balanced, negative fund balanced. Here are some of the fund balances we have, but which fund balance do we talk that we are negative fund balanced? We will be talking only about general fund because we have not expanded. We don't have enterprise. So far, we have only solid waste that is there, but most of what we depend upon is on the general fund. So we're talking more of general fund. Some of these ones will not apply, but as we go, we'll see that some of these ones are there. So we talk about assigned defined balance. This is, uh, financial resources who use, uh, whose use is restricted for specific initiatives. So you assign money, you put aside money, this is, this money is for this particular assignment. That is the out of what you have budgeted balanced, um, balanced budget, so that is in addition to that. Then you have also committed fund balance, financial resources whose use is restricted by action of the city council, which will remain binding unless removed. The money, funds have been committed for this project, for this particular reason. Non-spendable financial resources that will never convert to cash, will not convert to cash soon enough to affect the current, uh, fiscal or current, uh, spending that we have. Restricted financial resources that are subject to externally enforce, um, enforceable legal restrictions such as debt covenant. We have debt. You promised that every month or every quarter, you pay so much. So you put that money aside. That money is restricted specifically for that. At times, you are dictated by federal regulations or state regulations that we are giving this you, this grant. The conditions of this grant is that you have to meet this. One of them would be local match. So you put aside twenty-five percent, that's a dictation from the state or federal that you can have. So you would assign money restricted for that particular. Then we come to unassigned fund balance. That's the most used one. Unassigned, any residual net resources available after consideration of this nature of non-spendable, restricted, committed, or assigned fund balance. This fund balance is an assigned one. You can use it at any point in time. You can allocate it. That's the one, most of the times, in our case, we don't have that unassigned fund balance. Most of what we have has already been assigned. Governmental funds maintain all of those five. So this is general fund has got all those ones. Committed fund balance will be used first when paying for expenses. So you may have money that has been committed to spend, to pay for expenses, that has been committed. Then you have capital projects funds will be assigned fund balance for the funding of specific projects. As you know, you have put aside eleven point one million dollars for capital projects. That money is assigned for that, but those particular projects for the fiscal year. Then you have debt service fund that are classified, either they are spendable or restricted. Once debt is retired, you will take that money and you can assign anywhere else for other projects, or you can assign for the next capital projects that are to come. With that, having known or having reminded of what balanced budget is, what fund balance is, if you have any question or any comment, you should add into this as we start this year, this week.
Thank you, Ms. Malazi. Uh, we have Mr. Brown.
Um, we just went through making a number of revisions to the budget at the last meeting. Um, I think this information is great for the coming, but we don't have the cleaned-up budget with all the changes to include the contingency that we have in place. And I think that would have been very helpful putting up with this thing for one. When will we be able to get that?
So we, we discussed with the city manager, because we were, we are going to have it as soon as we have the amended. Today, we are amending the budget through, as soon as you adopted that, you have asked the amendment for the safer grant is to be added. We have one point one million dollars to be added. So our budget has increased from one hundred and five million dollars to one hundred and seven million dollars. So we have, those lines that have been affected, some of those ones will be reduced, some will be removed. So we have to, as soon as possible, when it can be published with all those changes.
City manager? Yeah, I'm the city manager, too. I'm just concerned because we've had, at least for the last month, you know, residents come up and ask questions, and I think it's valid that they ask a question because they can't see it in its total vision. Um, I think particularly at the last budget, um, you know, a number of changes were made, and so they don't see it changing in real time. So that's problematic.
Are you asking, basically, when the FY twenty budget will be online in final form?
Available for the public. Right. Even, even the last, the memo that you read into the record...
Mm-hmm.
To indicate the changes that were made, most of them are probably looking at a dated document.
Got it.
So they really can't see where we are truly in this process.
So I think we can simply put, and I defer to Mr. Malazi on the, I know they've been using, you know, spreadsheets and other tools or whatnot, but the memorandum and the final layout of the budget, I think we can post that if they already laid it out. If I'm not mistaken, it seems like what Mr. Malazi has requested is this new safer grant is an FY twenty addition, um, new, a new two million dollars that we received from the federal government. And so he's saying that he would like to include that before posting it. And so, and, and what I was saying is, I don't oppose that. I think, you know, that's fine if, if that's the will of the council, or if you'd like for us to just post the, uh, budget as it is now, we can do both. It doesn't have to be either or.
Well, I mean, at this point, we're gonna take action, of course, on the two million, but I think as soon as possible that that needs to be available for them.
Mr. Malazi, you know the timeframe by which we go.
So the budget for us, as we're amending this time, this one is a, was an extra that has just come now, but it's already done. It's not just online. So whenever it will be online, it's online.
So we can, so we can post it tomorrow, if that's the case.
I think that's quite right.
Thank you for the report, Mr.
Donald. I'm gonna have to infer with, uh, Councilmember Rau. There were, on September tenth, there was a budget presented to us with a lot of arrows in it. And, uh, we are constantly getting blasted by the public because of this deficit, that people don't understand how we can operate as a government with a six million dollar deficit. We need some type of communication explaining that. Um, specifically, the, the budget that you gave us on September tenth, on the day of the, uh, hearing, and, and we were bound by law to pass... And, and we were bound by law to pass the budget within a certain timeframe. And so it doesn't necessarily mean that the budget has that laws. But one, on page four, you might want to take notice because I don't want wrong information to continue to go out to the public. On page four, there was a revenue expenditure report that was in the budget and it only projected revenues, no expenditures.
Do you have the budget for eighteen? I think the latest should be for the eighteen.
Okay. This is the one, the last budget. There were seven iterations that was given to this council. We got like ten iterations.
What date is on?
This is September tenth.
There is one for September eighteenth. That's the one you passed. That's the one you adopted.
This is the same information in that budget.
They made, we made some changes and there were some, some departments that switched it out and all those things are being corrected. That's why I'm saying now the budget is updated. But the one that is online is the one that the city manager submitted.
What went to the public was not accurate information. And so I just want to make sure when you load another iteration, that it's accurate information. For example, in this budget, it was projected that we had collected thirty million dollars in property taxes and the fiscal today that we received was twenty-eight million a year to date. But on the balance sheet, on the statement of revenue expenditure cash basis, it showed taxable receivables of twenty-six million.
That's the reason why you have the changes because as you make changes, we make revenue changes, we make expenses changes, you find out that the tenth one is different from the eighteenth.
This is the same information that was given. And then also on the approved interest table, you stated that we paid off all our debt. We didn't have, we paid off our payment, correct?
Payed me the one was paid, yes.
Okay. So what is the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that's in approved interest payable? Okay. And so all I'm asking is that the public, our job, my job, is to handle budget and be a policy maker. His job as a city manager is to effectuate budgets. In order for all of us to do that, we gotta have correct information. For the public to trust us, we have to put out accurate information. And so all Councilmember Rouse, and I'm comparing with her, is that when we put out information to the public, it cannot no longer have any errors. It can no longer have inaccurate information. Now, what I'm asking you right now, can you explain how we can operate? Because this is the question that's constantly coming to us. How are we operating with a six million dollar deficit? And then what are you going to give us the plan in order to clear this deficit up? If I can't receive that plan from you yet.
So before I answer on the fund balance deficit, the CFO produces the budget. They're putting the budget online. That's the city manager's office. They put that budget online. And he submitted that budget to the council as we, he stated last time to say, until we make all these changes, we'll have final application online. So we have it, we have, we have given it to the city manager's office. They published online. We don't post online that budget. Now coming to the fund balance, we have the audit report. And the audit report is showing we are in deficit fund balance. As we have said, there you have revenues. Revenue equals to expenses. That's okay. But we don't have surplus money. And this is an aggregation of what we have been having. We spent more than what we brought in over the years. So we have nine, this is the audit report, nine million dollars. This year, we put one point five million to reduce that fund balance. It doesn't mean that the budget that was presented was not balanced. It was balanced, but there is no extra funds in reserve. Should anything happen, we do not have cushion. That's what fund balance is. Should anything happen, we don't have anything. Should there be even tornadoes, anything, you go to FEMA. FEMA doesn't give you money. You have to spend to be reimbursed. So we don't have that surplus. Not that the budget was presented was not balanced. It's balanced, but we do not have surplus.
So we don't have surplus. And so we did put two point five in contingency, correct?
With total, in the, total money put aside is two point six million dollars. One of that is a one point one million dollar that is in contingency. In case of anything, you can appropriate that money at any time you wish. Then on the other side, you have one point five million dollars that is putting in reserve to reduce that nine deficit. So we have one point five in reserve and one million, one point one million dollars in contingents by a lot of two point six million dollars for this twenty twenty budget.
And so where's the plan for us to continue to work towards reducing this deficit?
So the plan was, it's in our, so the plan was, it's in our finance budget that the council adopted. We talked about we have to put aside every budget. Like now, this budget, we're supposed to put aside about eight million dollars, which we have not got even half of that. We said we are going to, after transition, we have to make sure that we are, in three years, we have to put a plan. During those three years, if it doesn't work, the CFO and the city manager has to sit down and give a plan. It's in the ordinance. And that plan will not work if our expenditures are always going up. Our expenses have to be minimized so that we can have balance. First, we have to get rid of negative fund balance. Now, we don't even talk about investing because we can't invest. We are still in a hole. So, so the plan is we said, we say, how can we reduce the spending? We have a balanced budget, but should something happen, we don't have anything for us to depend on.
And so what I'm asking for is for you to put this, Mr. Donald, this in some type of writing, some type of periodical, some type of language so that we can share with residents because I'm consistently getting concerns from residents that we are broke, that we don't have money, that we're operating in deficit, that we're not cutting out, we're not doing enough to cut spending. Also, I would like to ask you, are we using only one bank?
We are using one bank. We have some, we are using one bank because that's what we are using. We are not investing in anything. So everything is operational. So yes, we still have one bank. That's true.
Okay. So is there any more possible that you can work your staff to come up with a deposit program?
We have already, they draft, yes.
But we only have one bank.
Because they are giving the data due now. We have, we have.
So let me ask you this question. It's my understanding that the Federal Reserve only ensures us up to two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, correct? Anything over that, if anything happens, is at loss. So according to my research, what most cities do, they spread their money out between ten, depends on how large the city is and how much money they have. They spread their money out between ten to twenty banks. And from my understanding, that since I have been elected, we've only had our money in one bank.
So we don't have investment you're going to lose. Every money that we have, whatever is for spending and others are in this small, small denomination that we have.
So my understanding is that it's busy?
I just want to go on the record by saying that I started out from the beginning before the first budget came out. And I do know that it is time conscious and that we have to have the budget complete by a certain amount of time. So what originally happened was that Mr. Malazi, our CFO treasurer, just did a budget. And people that title do that to start a conversation. It's not their budget. They just want to get it moving because they're on the timetable and they know they have to get from point eight to point fifty. No response. No response from the city manager. Then came the next one. No response again. So finally, and I don't even count how many times after that, finally, we got to the point of getting the budget from the city manager. That was in early August. Then that budget was changed. Then we got another budget. We got another. And we got one on September the tenth. And then finally, we got one on the eighteenth, where everybody came to that we voted on and approved at that meeting. There was a concern, okay? One person did. That's okay. But, and I didn't vote for it, okay? And I didn't vote for it because the cuts were not deep enough with a seven million dollar deficit. And I still feel that way. But I clearly remember, and the people that were there, remember, the CFO said, it will take us three years to get that seven million down if we do a little more than two million a year and put it towards that. That's the one thing. The second thing is that I called for money to go towards legal for litigation and Council, Councilman Baker made a good point. It's in the contingency, let's get it out of there. So I just heard what you just said about the contingency. So when people start talking about moving money out of that, I'm going to get really upset about it. Because I know that we have litigation and we need to, we should have put the money in litigation that we knew needed to go in there because you told us how much needed to go in there and we all know that, okay? So is the budget perfect? No. We are two years and four months old. We cannot do what cities do that are fifteen, twenty, and fifty years old. We're trying to walk and we're falling. And we've done a good job of really doing a lot with a little bit. And I commend you for everything that you have done to get on this stage. But you have been a good steward of our money and you have come to this podium. And all of you out there that come here know, he has said consistently, you're spending too much money. And I'm saying this as a finance person, not because it's something that I just think about. So I sit back, I watch, I see, I follow the numbers, I ask questions.
That's right.
I'm done.
When money gets funny, the people get funny. I do want to just reiterate Councilwoman Rowell's request for those up to date records because we actually did hear about the comments tonight, some misinformation about our fund balance. That, that I think they're looking at. We actually did move some money around and make some cuts so that we could have a fund balance or margin fund balance. But I want to ask about the 2019 closeout. Have we completed that process?
So the process is still ongoing with, we expect maybe by the fifteenth. We, we are trying as much as we can to bring the reports by the twenty-second, the next meeting. However, we are still having invoices that are coming into, from 2019. At the same time, we still have got payroll for 2019. So until payroll is, which is the biggest chunk of expenses, we can't close it. So we have payroll and we have got some invoices. They will see where we stand.
At what point might we be able to see a spreadsheet with each budget line that shows which ones were overspending 2019 and which ones were underspending?
I have it now in my behalf, but as I said, now I have it here. I can forward it to you tonight. But I said, it's not complete without payroll. But you see each and every department where they are spent. It's only payroll the biggest. But you see operations where they are. So that one is available anytime.
Because I haven't seen it. There are people online who are saying that, that certain members are overspending or underspending their budgets, but no one from the finance department has ever contacted me or my aide. So I just wonder, do you know how people outside of council would have gotten that information before? Do you that?
I think it's misleading or it's just want to tarnish the image of maybe finance or someone got a report and if I have something, if I send it to you, I send for the entire set.
Right. So you haven't sent it to anyone?
No, I haven't sent it.
But people have, people outside of council have this, have this information. Where might they have gotten that information from?
Definitely, we are the source. How they, they've got it, but maybe the focus was only one person, two people. But you get it for everyone and you see what happens. Then you might ask, I can sit down with you or I can explain this public information that you elected officials ought to know. So I'll provide it to you, but know that it's not conclusive because payroll is not yet done. I'll send you tonight, actually.
Thank you.
I'll send to the government board.
Yes, and I am, I have to agree with my colleague, Lee. I, I am concerned that information is getting out of finance and getting out of social media and we haven't seen it. And so I don't, our confidentiality, I mean, Georgia is for open and transparent government. But when, when people outside of this agency is getting information before us, I do have that concern. I also would like for you to check into doing a deposit program for our city because I am concerned that we are only going to one bank. I also want to make sure that you include a report on our special revenue funds such as our forfeit, uh, forfeitures, asset forfeitures, and also transportation funding. We're not getting that information.
So I just got four reports from PD and that full report of each and every spending including what is scheduled to be provided due on the twenty-second. So I already have the report from PD.
Okay. And Mr. Malazi, I just would like to make sure that we reiterate that we cannot, from going forward, we cannot put out inaccurate information. My job is to oversee budgets and do policy. And I am very concerned as a finance person myself that I don't have the accurate information to make accurate decisions regarding the city. And it's my job to be fiscally responsible and transparent. That's why I was elected and that's what I am going to do. Anybody who needs that, I am going to have a son.
So you, you have the budget as amended, including the safer grant, that that budget will be sent to you. I'm not going to send the one that will be online. So you have it, the time you come online, you have already the budget. But we have updated budget as I'm talking to you now, but it's not the one that is online.
Well, we don't have an update for it.
How forward do you have to send it?
And when will you put it online?
The city manager puts online.
As soon as we receive it, we'll post it.
Can we see it before you put it online? Because I want to know, right?
I was. He, he, the city manager puts online. You have it before.
As soon, as soon as we receive it, we'll forward it to the council. When you guys are satisfied with it, we'll post it online.
I want to forego my comments so we can move along. But overall, I just want to say that when we continue to omit something and we already have a copy of it and then we direct our CFO to do something else, it changes. And when it changes, we already have the previous version and some people may disseminate it. And when they finally get an updated version, they're saying it's incorrect. And we're going in a circle. And I think that it hasn't been posted yet. The city manager just gave resolve. And we shouldn't be critical until we get that.
Let me just say this. Let me just say, at some point in time, we have to come to the realization of what things really is. Because we got to control our territory, ladies and gentlemen. We have to control our territory. Because if we don't do that, people will control us for us. People like the AJC, channel two, channel five, channel y. So I would hope, Mr. Malazi, that hearing everything that's coming today, that we get to a point where we can say, this is what we have.
that we get to a point where we can say, "This is what we have." But sometimes you gotta just say, "Stop. This is what we have, and this is what we're presenting, and we all buy into it and move forward." So if I don't say anything I see today, um, just take control of our territory. You know, it's gonna be enforced. Thank you so much.
Mr. Clark?
Next item, city manager's report.
Alrighty, so mayor and council, as a part of, we get the official monthly city manager's report at the end of the month. Today, we do have a document for which we are delivering, which is the 2020 strategic plan that is promised and requested by council. But I would like to highlight, though, I noticed that there were some questions by some of our citizens. One, they asked where they could see a breakdown of all of the work orders. They're actually included in the city manager's report under public works. And so those are readily available already online, as well as a lot of the events and questions that they asked. So the report that is presented to council is provided at the end of the month and is listed online all the way back to March of 2018. And so they are available for download, inspection, and use however the public may desire to do so. I'll quickly go through the strategic plan, just highlighting that, of course, it's still in draft form because it is scheduled for potential approval on the October twenty-second date, council meeting date. But it does include the edits submitted by council, as well as inclusive of the survey and appendix that you asked to be included. So there's a draft letter from the mayor, a draft letter from the city manager that discusses the process, quotes from each of the elected officials, highlighting your focus areas. There is also, of course, you include the organizational chart. And there is a breakdown about the history of the city and timeline. Now, that's one of the things that you requested specifically, so we had our designer lay it out effectively. A breakdown of the city's position today, and a summary of the council's retreat with the University of Georgia, as well as results from the public town hall meetings, the summary. So that takes a few plate, a few pages. Also, a summary of the public input process and those eighteen events. Also, infographics that highlight the different decision points that the council went over, leveraging not only survey data in the town halls, but also your individual work. There is the SWOT analysis that you specifically requested is also included. And a breakdown of each one of the goals that came out of the SWOT analysis. As you could imagine, that takes a few pages. Then the oversight from the council of where we want to go as a city, taking those specific subject areas and then breaking them down into the five goal areas for which you agreed upon on how we will achieve our vision and mission. Also, an overview of what a balanced scorecard is, which we will use to measure, and what strategic planning is for the edification of the public. And then the specific council departmental strategic goals, projects, and initiatives that align with your five goals and initiatives. So your overarching goals lead the city, and then the departments have goals that lead up, that can be measured through KPIs, I'm sorry, for the public, your key performance indicators by which we will measure. And so all of the departments have those. And as we continue on, once you finish the goals, there is the financial implications of the plan. So these improvements, of course, have costs, so it talks about, you know, the ownership and implementation. And then how the rubber actually meets the road. So how do you actually implement this strategic plan? Which I know Councilmember Gilyard hearted on and wanted to ensure was dedicated and included. Go to the next, talk about the continued piece of citizen involvement and opportunities for citizens to participate in government throughout the strategic plan. The area by which we also added specifically in response to council is this closing piece, which is just a general statement, but it allows each member of the council to sign this document, therefore holding the entire city accountable. The appendix is included, as you'll see, broken down by each response, as well as a chart that explains each response, and how the survey responses will be used, not only in the development of the strategic plan, but implementing it. And so as you see, you have the written data, but you also have the visual by which you request it. Then there's additional supplemental information that breaks down each question and those results even further. And that is the end of the strategic plan and the appendix. It is about forty-one pages.
No, I just would like to commend you on this, you know, this obvious process. This is a long time coming. I have several residents who are asking for the completion of this. I'm glad we have it done. Now we have to get to work to implement it. And as you say, as you said, that it's gonna come at a cost. And so I appreciate your time, your effort, and your commitment to get this done. This is our first City of South Fulton strategic plan through 2020 and 2023. And there's gonna be a full document. It changes, we have to review it every year and see how, what changes you can make to it, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Dunn. Councilman, I'll give it back to you.
Yes, first, I'd like to thank everybody for coming out, and I would like to announce about this, next Monday will also be the second day that the City of South Fulton will be celebrating Indigenous People's Day. We're the only city in the whole state of Georgia to acknowledge Indigenous People's Day, and I'm proud of that. So we, we should be happy that something for, I think, I know that I will be out at several schools starting this Friday, I want to be in Bear Creek, doing conversations with the educators, because we can't really override what Fulton County Schools teaches. But, you know, it's almost an atrocity that our kids are taught at Fulton County Schools that Columbus is covered America. And I'll be there also, having the first conversations regarding our education committee that I'm developing now. So that's something that's coming up this Friday, so I'll be in Bear Creek Middle, that's the first school.
Again, Happy Indigenous People's Day. The day after that is the only day, or let me say, the day after that is the first day of voting in our city elections. It is also the actual election day for our District Six election. It is the only day that people can vote in both elections on the same day. And currently, the only place that you can do that is Wolf Creek Library. When you go to Wolf Creek Library, there will be two separate voting machines on two separate sides of the room. You have to get a card for the city election, turn that in, get a card for the county election, and turn that in. Please vote, especially for our county commissioner. We would really like to have a county commissioner that represents our atries here. If you don't get two cards and vote on two machines, you have not voted for everyone that you need to vote on. You can find more information about this at caliqueairs.com/vote. And coming up next Saturday is our third annual Electoral College, it's a day of political education. I am proud to announce that we will have candidates for US Congress, US Senate, and we are actually working on some presidential candidates as well. So please come out to the location that will be disclosed when you sign up at caliqueairs.com/vote. South Fulton, forever.
Good afternoon, good evening. Just want to thank everybody for coming out, and I want to invite everyone out for October twenty-sixth, from ten AM to two PM, for our fall festival. This year, we're not doing the, what do you call it? We're not doing the jumpers and the house, we're gonna take care of the whole man and the entire household. We're going to do our first city vaccination for cats, for our dogs. We're gonna have a cancer table, we're gonna have the chiropractor there, we're gonna have medical individuals there, we're just gonna do a health that we can't attend to at Burdette Park. And the shots are free, the rabies shots, as well as the, they call it parlor? Oh, no, she's saying, no, no, but it's parlor shots. But we're, I think we're going up to about two hundred. So the first two hundred individuals that come, you will be able to get your dogs vaccinated free and get whatever type of medical information you need. Thanks, and come out.
Hi, everyone. I am excited to let you know that the City of South Fulton was selected to join the National League of Cities, Cities of Opportunity, Helping People, Driving Communities Corps. This is the second year, we are one of five cities. Last year, East Point and Atlanta was in that group. And so we are focused on urban agriculture, because I do have that in my district, environmental issues, we have that throughout the entire city, almost, and economic opportunity. So it is really, really a good opportunity for the city to showcase, showcase itself nationally. That's what's really, really, really important. And so I'm looking forward to it. We're working with Georgia State's Masters in Public Health Program. We will be working with Morehouse School of Medicine, and with other lease of space. Because that's something that we really need to work on in terms of getting office space in our city. And I am really diligently trying out very best to get economic growth up and running. So, thank you for your patience, you're gonna keep working on it.
Thank you. Thank you for all, thank you all for coming out and your civic engagement. I want to thank everyone who participated in the East Point Festival. We had over three hundred participants. It was a very Georgia's occasion. I want to announce two events. This is our third annual fall festival at Walkmore Park. Last year, we yielded over five hundred participants. And this year, we are featuring the Lion King movie. And so we do have boos and trucks, video games, there will be a costume contest. And we look forward to having, we have face painting, and we have invited our H O A's to come out and decorate tables and also give our children candy. So it's typically a well-attended event, the event starts at three PM, and the movie will start at six PM, The Lion King Movie. Also, Georgia is, has a reputation that I'm not proud of, and it's being one of the leading states in human trafficking. And so what we are doing is we're having a community ambassador training on human trafficking. We are partnering with U-Spar. So if you want to be a human trafficking ambassador, please plan to attend the training. You can become a certified ambassador, November second, at Walkmore Park, at eleven AM. That is at Walkmore Park, eleven AM. And that is for you to become, get the training to become a certified human trafficking ambassador. And so what we are going to do is, once we get this training, we're gonna also participate in other activities. There is an unholy tour that we're gonna plan to go on eventually. And that will take us to all of the areas that have human trafficking, so we are going to watch out for analysis.
Hello, I want to thank everyone for coming out to the National Corporate Cop Day. That was held last Wednesday, October the second. We partnered with the City of East Point and the City of Atlanta. So that was good to have our, all of our ABCs come together to celebrate our officers. And then also too, on Saturday, we had a successful gun buyback in the City of South Fulton. This is our second annual, and we're looking forward to doing that again. So we're collecting illegal guns off of the street. Want to remind you that on October the seventeenth, Budgeroe will be having their ribbon cutting. The Budgeroe Community Precinct will be opening up, and we will have our ribbon cutting on October the seventeenth at ten AM at the St. James Live Shopping Center. So you should be able to come out if you would so desire, but we would love to have you. Also, on October twenty-first, D Two or District Two will be having their town hall meeting at six thirty at Rose Church of Price. So we do invite for all to come out and learn more. We'll have our leadership and our staff there to answer any questions as well. And I also want to let you know, of course, it is breast cancer month, but October is also deemed Domestic Violence Month. And our police precinct will be hosting a forum on domestic violence at the Old National Precinct on October the fifteenth. And I believe that start time is five, five o'clock. So if you all can make it out, I understand that there's an excellent speaker that will really give us some good information. But that's all I have. If you need more information, you know where to find me, crimaletha.doms@cityofsouthfulton.edu.
Couple of quick updates. In partnership with the Cascade Business Merchants Association, we have three more cleanups before the end of the year. The next one being October twenty-sixth, we meet every month at the Cascade Drive Room range at ten AM. So please come out and join us. Wanted to say congratulations to the Santan Athletic Association on a great homecoming this past weekend in their efforts around raising awareness around sickle cell. They had great participation all week. And we were able to build those folks up in the park leading up to that event to include paying our concessions. We have new grills going in and new bleachers. So I really heard the concerns from the community about the lack of amenities in that park. And we're also working on addressing some of the issues in travel and growth. And last but not least, our next quarterly town hall meeting will be December ninth, 2019, at Wolf Creek Library, and you know, you'll come out, it's at six PM.
Okay. Seems like everybody's doing fine, right?
I want to bring up a few things. Today I had the pleasure of swearing in two pro temp judges in our municipal court. James Gabe Pence Jr., and also Teresa and Ma'am, who come with a lot of legal experience. So I can say that we are fully ready to go to the courts now. When our, when our chief judge, who is funny with us, is not able to sit on the bench, but we're taking care of him. The other thing is, I was at the real conference of mayors this weekend. I just want to let you know that one day agenda items that was going to be coming around, because they're coming here this year, is that has to do with, has to do with gun buying. And they are pushing the fact that you must register it, you must go through a process before you buy them. Second thing I want to know is that there is technology out there now that's coming towards US Conference of Mayors called a smart gun. A smart gun is where only the person who owns the gun can discharge their weapon. So if you, if you've got a child in the house, he picks up the weapon, he can't discharge it. So that technology is out there, and it won't go for police now. We talk about, but we, the Conference of Mayors, those two things are really, really, we're looking at. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be traveling with Ms. Gilyard, that was a deal. And she goes to accept her award in, in Washington DC, or her grant. Lastly, we are, we're just opening up another precinct, police precinct. And it will be located in, on District Two, on Budgeroe. Uh, and the shop is open and ready to go. Uh, we should be having the grand opening sometime soon. Trying to get the sign done. I got beat by my own people. Trying to get, trying to get the signing done. So I want to put you in that, in that, because the Kalie is setting me up, so I'll, I'll stop right here. Thank you all. October 17th? October 17th, we'll be opening up that precinct on, on our Button Road.
All right.
Next item, consent agenda. Item 6, proclamation presented to the National Coalition of One of Your Black Women. Item 7, proclamation presented to A to O major chapter of Native Sci-Fi fraternity. Council appointments, renaming committee, correction of Councilmember Gilliard's appointee from DC Lot to Doris Clark. Dr. James Winston, appointed by Councilmember Gilliard. Mr. Stanley Knowles, appointed by Councilmember Gomes. Mr. Keith Perry, appointed by Councilmember Gomes. Organ Americans Board, Wanda Patterson, appointed by Councilmember Willis. And Parks and Recreation Board, Wanda E. De- E. De Depot, uh, appointed by Councilmember Gomes. Item 9, council approval of the City of South Fulton's 2020 legislative agenda. And lastly, council approval to authorize city manager and city attorney to finalize negotiations and enter to agreement with Jacobs for the provision of public works services.
Okay. I'll take most of the proof consent agenda.
I move to approve.
Second. Probably move the second discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor?
Next item, previous agenda items. Council, second reading, and adoption of ordinance by the City of South Fulton, encouraging protection of environment, amending Title 14, environment of the city code of ordinances, reducing the use of single-use plastics products within the city and for other lawful purposes.
I'd like to make a motion to pass, um, the adoption of the ordinance reducing single-use plastics use in the City of South Fulton.
Second. Probably move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously. Mr. Mayor?
Next item. Council's second reading and approval of an ordinance amending Title 6, health and sanitation of the city code of ordinances to enhance public safety and property values to address nuisance issues related to old trees and for other lawful purposes. Sponsored by Councilmember Jackson, Donald and Gilliard.
I move to approve the ordinance amending, uh, health and sanitation of the city code of ordinances to enhance public safety and property values to address nuisance issues relating to old trees and for other lawful purposes.
Second. Probably move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Item 14, council approval of city YIP schedule, city manager.
Good evening, the mayor, council. Um, in your package, you mentioned you have the revised city YIP schedule. I was here at the last council meeting that made the presentation. We went back, made an edit to the document to, um, clearly it's trouble to changes that were proposed from 2018 to, I mean, from the FY19 to the FY20 version. Um, so hopefully we clarified that. And also, one of the questions that was asked was related to, um, massage products for them out there as a professional service, and how to be determined that this is a professional, um, business. So that business is generated from the state's website, and there's a definition of what a professional business is. And so we pretty much mirror the state's, uh, criteria for professional organizations. And so, um, we also, the changes that we're looking at, we did do industry comparisons based upon what, um, the City of South Fulton is charging, as well as what some of our surrounding, um, sister cities are charging. And so that is a justification for why we were proposing some increases in some areas, because we want to be, well, we want to remain competitive, we also want to maximize, uh, what we can as well.
Is this your next item? I retain a motion.
I can make a motion, um, that we pass the YIP schedule.
Probably move the second discussion.
So, one of the things we heard, um, from several businesses, and I think it started even maybe a year ago, and I think you mentioned this at the last meeting. Um, and I understand you hit the category for massage, just because that was a category understate, which is not really competitive with the metro area. Um, and that information was presented, and I, you know, I asked at the last meeting if somebody could bring that back. And so, um, did anybody even seek to look at what other municipalities? I understand it's a, a category of professional practitioners, but...
So we did do a comparison, um, of what's surrounding the city, this is based to all of the things that we are proposing.
So what did you see for this particular category?
Well, massage, uh, that we really speak to that, but it's my understanding that, um, for all of those, we're pretty competitive with our surrounding cities. So one of the things that we found is that you have two options. Um, you can either have a flat rate, or you can have the gross receipt comparison. So I believe that the other municipalities, Marietta, they charge 200. Um, I believe Dunwoody's charging about 190. So we're charging a lot larger, um, than the other municipalities. Oh, okay. But I believe that the best thing to do, um, in my opinion, I would think that if you want to have the gross receipt comparison, it means that you'll be comparing it based on what the revenue that that business is bringing. If you want to do it that way, that way you will have, if the business is making more, um, revenue, we'll also have that opportunity as well. So this depends on, we're even both options? If you can do the gross, um, receipt comparison or flat fee, we're doing both. Most municipalities are doing one or the other. So we're just giving options for them.
Right, I'm also concerned, because I know what I think we heard, it was the application that comes from the door. And so we also want to make sure we're in business mode. And I think y'all remember, we heard this discussion, and I think they talked, we made about this. I just don't know, that just, the others are so clearly professional trades to me. And that's, it just seems like it's odd. I don't know with the, uh, with the council, but, um, I did want to bring it up, because this was brought to our attention. And, and, and that data that you shared, you know, it wasn't that close. Personally, when they look at that flat rate, 400 compared to 190, that's lighted up.
In further discussion?
Yes. Um, I see that you added the, the special for special events. Thank you very much for that. Uh, there was some conversation that certain special events, if they were in the role of being handled by one department, whereas other special events, if they're in a park, are being handled by the Parks Department. Did we ever reconcile that, or are they still split out between those two departments?
So we're still discussing internally, uh, what departments will oversee those special events. Right now, um, community development, uh, and regulatory affairs as well, is what is part. But we have not finalized what it looks like, uh, operationally from an internal standpoint. And we're still talking through where does it make, make sense to lot, to rest.
All right, thank you.
Okay. There's another company, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, uh, 6th, no. Okay, Mr. Mayor?
Next item, item 15, council approval of intergovernmental agreement between the City of College Park, Georgia, and the City of South Fulton, Georgia, for inspection and permitting services for 2029 29 Roosevelt Highway.
Uh... Um, yes, I would like to move that we approve the IGA, uh, will see a college park for the inspection and permitting services for 29 29 Roosevelt Highway with an amendment. Uh, the amendment, uh, stated that, uh, needed sidewalks and last ditch road, uh, work, and Y2 road, uh, is adhered to.
Yeah, second.
Second.
Probably move the second, in discussion, all those in favor? That passes unanimously.
Uh, listen, I mean, I turned the water, you need to update the IGA with that amended language, of course.
Okay, I'll make sure. Yes, I'll, I'll make sure it's done.
Mr. Mayor?
Next item, item 16, council approval of a resolution amending the membership of the City of South Fulton Development Authority and for other lawful purposes.
Um, actually, it is particular ordinance, um, sponsored by myself.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That is, that is correct. I, I presented it to the city clerk with, um, just Councilwoman Willis, but it's my understanding now that it's sponsored by Councilwoman Rowell, and co-sponsored by Councilwoman Willis.
All right, problem, bro?
This particular, um, position would increase the development authority to nine members. Um, it would, for position eight, the name of the, Derek Coller, as presented, and position nine would be Mary Parker.
Probably move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? That passes, that fails for lack of proof.
Next item, item 17. Council, first reading of an ordinance amending the fiscal year 2020 budget to accept the safer grant. And this also, uh, should be heard with the item removed of the consent agenda, which is council approval to accept the staffing for adequate fire and emergency response grant in the amount of $2,242,499. And to amend the FY20 budget to add 15 safer firefighter positions and increase the department's personnel budget to 25% match requirement.
May I think this Councilmember Jackson has...
Exactly.
Um, I was looking, where you were saying, defining a couple of positions?
Yes, ma'am.
Um, and I'm looking at, could we not find something different as far as to define with the exception of the parts on?
Well, that position is one that we did not intend to include in the FY, uh, 20 budget in general. So those positions were not intended to be filled. And so removing those from the budget and providing the cost savings from the fire department and the staff working in there.
So you had, you had them in there, but you, you had no intention of filling?
We had, so those were supposed to be removed. Remember, we did, the city manager's office did not receive the full personnel budget during those deliberations. And so those two positions were supposed to be removed. One of those positions, uh, was the, uh, assistant in, uh, Mr. Pike's office. But remember, he had permits and two other subject areas. Exactly. And so the other position was supposed to be, uh, additional, uh, what is it? Support for Mr. Pascal, because he, he was coordinating things beyond open records and records. He is now with the clerk's office, and so when we were moving that role, there was no intent to add an additional position. And so both of those positions were add-ons that made it into the budget that should not have.
Do you have a motion?
I move that we approve, uh, the safer grants. I move that we approve the sa- the safer grant.
Probably move the second in further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? Safety grant.
Second reading.
Oh, I'm just, I'm just, this was the second reading. First reading?
Yeah, so...
Yes, the, 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 looking for first reading, uh, of the actual items that were thrown out of the, um, consent agenda, there for approval.
And so that would mean that we would bring back the, uh, second reading of the amendment on the consent agenda for the 20th.
That's correct. Right?
As I said, correct, we, we can't put any more, this is all the consent agenda.
That's right, that's right. Sorry about that.
Mr. Mayor, that completes, uh, your agenda for this evening.
I want y'all to know at 9:15. Go on, hold it, it's gonna be on y'all, come here.
You know, I move that we go into executive session for personnel, uh, litigation. And do we have any real estate in Ternawalk, Mass? Get real estate. Yeah.
Ternawalk, you, you want to hold on, you got something to say about that?
Yeah.
Okay. Second. Probably move the second?
I would like to make a friendly amendment that executive session is not for past 10 o'clock.
Second.
Um, in discussion?
Probably move the second discussion.
And we don't want to go past 10 o'clock. And when we, um, ask to, uh, we suggest to executive session, then we need to go straight back into executive session. A lot of times, we stay up here five or 10 minutes, and we lose 10 minutes. So for every minute, I would like to accept that amendment, but for every minute, if everybody does not get, but we don't have a forum until 10 minutes later, then we need to add 10 minutes on to the time.
I'll be back there now.
What'd you say? I'm headed back there now. Okay. All, let's vote.
I make out the motion, I make your motion. Okay, that's... Thank you all.
The regular meeting, says, uh, in executive session.
I say...
Can we get those together? Uh, we don't, if we want to adjourn the executive session, no, we don't want to adjourn.
Oh.
It's reconvene, we just want to reconvene, reconvene. I was wrong, I said it.
Okay. I make a motion to reconvene, uh, regular meeting.
Second. Probably move the second, in discussion, hearing, uh, all in favor? Now we need to move to extend. I make a motion to extend executive session until 10:35.
Second.
Probably move the second. And you can have me vote? Sit there. Uh, in discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Probably move the second, discussion, all those in favor? That passes.
I make a motion to extend the executive session one more time until 11 o'clock.
Wait a minute, hold on. I think this is more than, is to have, no, is to have...
That's my motion.
Okay.
Is there a second? That fails for lack of a session.
Second.
I make a motion to extend the, uh, uh, executive session one more time until 11:30.
Second.
Probably move the second in discussion, hearing none, all those in favor?
Mark. We convene, all right?
I like your dress.
Oh, thank you.
Did you make that one? Mayor Procent Baker, I think we can proceed, because we've not taken any action tonight.
But the clerk is, the clerk just... He said he wants to come.
Discussion, hearing none, all those in favor? All right, and then that one.
I make a motion to close the public meeting.
To adjourn.
Mr. Turk, is there, there was nothing?
Yeah, there was no formal action in the executive session.
Okay, good. All right. Discussion, hearing none?
I, yeah. Thank you all for staying tonight.
All right. Any no further discussion?
No.
All those in favor? Good night.